We are live.
The chair notes the time is six P M and I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Everold Henry, Chair of the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with roll call the Z B A members. Um, Mr. White.
President.
Mr. Meadows. I see Mr. Meadows and I think he's on mute. Yeah.
I am.
Mr. Sloviter.
Here.
Mr. Offeld. The chair notes that Korm is present. Also with us tonight is Miss Greenbaum. One of our associate Z B A members. Also attending tonight's meeting is Mr. Sinta Williams, I know of the town. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty five extended through June thirtieth twenty twenty seven. The ability of public bodies to meet in fully remote or hybrid manner. This meeting should be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. Via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth. For the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst Z B A is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for all our decisions. Tonight's agenda. Approval of minutes from July tenth of twenty twenty five. And public hearing on Z B A F Y twenty twenty six dash oh one. L S C Fornax LLC, Pulp Hill. Request a special permit for the modification of the previous two special permits. Z B A. Twenty twenty dash oh one and Z B A twenty eighteen dash nineteen. Under three point three four oh transformer station or other energy facility. For property located on map parcel two A dash eighteen. To B dash three, to B dash four, R O outline residence and zoning districts. We'll have discussion on the application. A general public comment period. Other issues not anticipated within forty eight hours. And as always, discuss any upcoming petitions before the board. The first order of business tonight is the approval of the approval of the meeting minutes from July tenth. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? I see nodding heads while everyone is mute. I also, yes. I've also reviewed the meeting minutes and I have no corrections or any comments on it unless anyone. Does anyone have any? Corrections, objections to the minutes as is. Mr. Offeld.
Uh, just one minor thing. On the election of officers. At the fourth line, it says Offeld expressed disappointment that Meadows would not continue as vice chair. I express. Disappointment that he would not serve his chair. So the words vice should be struck.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep. Otherwise, okay.
Are there any other amendments or corrections to be made? If there are no other corrections, I will entertain a motion to prove the minutes for July twen- for July tenth twenty twenty five. As corrected by Mr. Offeld. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
The move.
Second.
It has been moved and second. The vote requires a roll call vote. Mr. Meadows.
Again. Hi.
Mr. Sloviter.
Yeah, I.
Mr. White.
I.
Mr. Offeld. I believe Mr. Offeld is an I.
I, yeah.
And the chair votes I. Thank you. The motion to approve the July tenth twenty twenty five meeting minutes with edits as discussed. Have been approved. Thank you, everyone. The second order of business tonight is public hearing Z B A F Y twenty twenty six dash oh one. L S C Fornax LLC, Pub- Pulpit Hill. Again, request a special permit for the modification of. The previous two special permits, Z B A twenty twenty dash oh one and Z B A twenty eighteen dash nineteen. Before we can open to the public hearing, does anyone on the panel have anything to declare or disclose? I see no affirmative responses.
I, sorry, this is.
Um, before um, the applicants and petitioners jump in, I just wanna go over um, our submissions just for the record. It is a bit of a list, I'm just gonna um, quickly run through what we do have. Um, so for the July second submission, I see um. Stamped fire draft, draft drawings. Um, I do see the model for the batteries. And from July twenty twenty. Um. For, I'm sorry, for June twenty twenty six submission. Um, the cover letter, the noise assessment. The operations and maintenance plan. The invasive plant management plan. The storm water report. The New England Wetland Plans Pollinator Mix. The landscaping contract. Ever Source technical requirements. The application form L S C Fordax. Um, the site plan. The. Structural detail. The construction timeline. The fish report. The fire alarm details. Emergency response plan. Hazard mitigation analysis. And I believe Miss Williams submitted the report from um, A P D as well.
A F D.
I'm sorry, A F D. So with that, I'd like to welcome the applicants and. For point of record, before each um, person speaks, please identify yourself. And your address for the record, please. So who's representing um, L S C Fornax tonight?
Hi, my name is Sam Vallone. I am representing L S E Fornax tonight. And uh, my address is eighteen North Main Street in West Hartford, Connecticut.
And Mrs. Vallone, before you continue. Um, just for the record, there was a site visit this past Tuesday. And we had the opportunity to go out and see where the battery will be installed, where the existing um. Farm, solar panel farm is. Um, does any member of the board wish to add anything from the site visit? Okay. Um, with that, um, Mrs. Vallone, please continue.
Great, thank you. Uh, well, first of all, thank you so much for having us here and allowing us to present and big thank you to. Jacinta for working to get all of our materials together for us. Uh, my name's Sam Vallone. Um, I work at Loadstar Energy. L S E Fornax LLC, the applicant is a subsidiary of Loadstar. And um, also joining me from my team is Tim Coon from J R Russo, who's a civil engineer on the project. Um, Jeffrey Maceal, who's a partner at Loadstar Energy. And Kayla Karyazis, who's an engineer at Loadstar Energy. So I'm gonna give an intro and high level summary of the project and a little bit of background. Um, I can open up for questions and then I have um, my coworkers here to help answer more detailed questions too. Um, so with that being said, um. Is, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Great, alright. Um, so shown on my screen now is the project site, which is off of Montague Road, north of Pulpit Road. Um. There's five parcels depict depicted here owned by the Coles. And tonight we're seeking approval to relocate our battery energy, energy storage system. Um, from, as you can see on this drawing, the northeast corner of the property. Um, and we're gonna shift it over to the southwestern corner of the project site. Additionally, we're changing the battery technology from Norada to a Tesla Megapack. Um, and just to be clear, the battery is not constructed yet in the original location. The solar does exist, the battery has not been constructed yet, so we're, we're just proposing the relocation of the battery. Um, because the placement was already approved in the previous area. Um, so just to give some background on the whole solar project and the battery and why we're relocating. Um, we started conversations with Amherst back in twenty seventeen, just about a solar site on this property. Um, then in twenty eighteen, we got an order of conditions from the Amherst Conservation Commission. And then the Z B A issued us a special use permit for just the solar in twenty eighteen in March. Um, after that, in September of twenty nineteen. We amended the special use permit to allow for the addition of energy storage. And this was because of updates in the Massachusetts Smart Program. Um, that required solar sites to be associated with batteries. So we came back to the Z B A and you all granted an amended special use for the battery. And at that point, the battery was in the northeastern corner, right next to the solar array. Um, in twenty nineteen, um, we got the, the solar array operational, but again, battery was not operational yet. And then in twenty twenty. Um, Ever Source came to us and at the time, we had had an interconnection agreement with them for. The addition of the battery to go right next to the solar. Um, but they told us that we need to relocate the battery to the other side of the property. Closer to Montague Road. Um, because they basically wanted the battery pad to be within a line of sight of the utility poles. So that's what kicked all of this off and us needing to relocate the battery. So in twenty twenty four, um, we received a revised order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. With um, the new location of the battery. And then um, we started talks with um. Jacinta and the, the Z B A again at the beginning of this year. And we worked with Chris Bascom at the Fire Department and received the Fire Department approval. In um, it was July third of this year. So tonight, we're coming to you for the relocation of the battery. And just to give some high level details on the battery itself. And a more detailed view of the actual battery site plan, I'll scroll to this page. So this is right up against Montague Road, zoomed in on the relocated portion of the battery. Um, we're proposing a one Tesla Megapack two X L. Um, it's uh, a thousand nine hundred twenty seven kilowatts in a two hour duration. Um, it is couple, AC coupled with the solar facility, so it is connected to the, or will be connected to the existing solar facility. Um, the total limit of disturbance of just this battery pack and. The associated additions to the access road and utility poles is just under point three acres, so it's eleven thousand nine hundred square feet. Um, so pretty small. Um, additionally, we considered um, stormwater measures and have a, a stormwater plan which we submitted. Um, mostly that entails um, a berm on the uphill side of the access road. Um, to help uh, divert runoff from the uphill areas. And then there's also an infiltration trench to the south of the battery pack. Um, which will help um, equalize uh, the water downhill of the battery pack. Um, one more thing on fire safety, um, since we. Uh, we worked very closely with Chris Bascom and submitted a hazard mitigation analysis and all of the, the fire detail speculations. Um, but to summarize it. Um, the Tesla Megapack has two flame detector, two flame detectors that are on the battery enclosures. And those will be connected um, by uh, connected and monitored by a fire alarm control panel. And that's connected to a communicator that will transmit any signals to the Amherst Fire Department in case of an emergency. It will also signal us as the owner operator and our third party controller. Um, we also have smoke detector, detectors and an enunciator panel. Um, that kinda signals uh, gives you a map overlay of any alarms that are going off. And a manual pole station to, to deactivate the site. Um, alright, I think that summarizes it high level. Um, so happy to open up the floor for questions and again, we have. Um, our civil engineer here, our um, electrical engineer and uh, Jeffrey Maceal, who's been working on the project since twenty seventeen, so knows a lot about the history. So thank you very much.
Do members of the board have any questions for Mrs. Vallone? Mr. Offeld.
Um, okay, I've got a couple of questions. Um. The battery is gonna be connected to the grid as I just, from, from the site visit. I learned that the, there'll be a line from the battery pack. To Montague Road where it will be connected to the grid at that point, is that? Basically right?
Um, it, it's about right, so let me.
Yeah, that's okay. And, and um. The solar farm as it exists now is also connected to, to the grid at a different spot.
So the, let me scroll to this page. Um, I can see all of it. So right now, the solar array is connected um, kinda right below this house here. Um, try to zoom in. There's a few existing ever source poles there, which are for the solar already. And then we, to connect the battery to the solar and to the grid, have to add five new utility poles. And we're also moving one of the existing solar poles, um, just relocating a little bit south. Um, since Ever Source requested us to. So we're essentially adding on to the existing poles that are there for the solar.
Got it. Okay, good, that's. That's good to know. Um. I know, I'm assuming, and again, this was explained to us by, I, I believe it was Jamie. Who led us to this site. Um, that. The, the, the notion of the battery is basically to smooth out and. Smooth out the daily variations in, in electricity generated by the solar farm and add to the shoulders, I think he said, to. Maybe, you know, extend a few hours of energy production out of the system. So I just wanna be clear that the batteries are. Exclusively gonna be used with the solar farm, is kind of a partnering with the solar farm, is that right? They're not. Storing energy off elsewhere off the grid. From it, from elsewhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. It, it is connected to our solar farm, yes, so will be helping. Save energy from our solar to put back onto the grid.
Okay, um. And the, another question was the hours of operation. Uh, uh, well, let me back up. So one concern I have or question category is noise. And I'm, uh, again, Jamie said that it, this. Battery pack will make some noise. Um, and my question is about the. Time of day that that noise happens. Could you elaborate on this? Is this something that's twenty four seven, it's making noise, or is this uh? Certain times of the, of the day?
Um, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe so the solar is just during sunlight hours, but the battery can go all day. Jeff, correct me.
That, that's correct, and it has an H V A C unit attached to it, much like you would have in your house. That would be the only component that creates sound that was of concern is the air conditioning unit.
Exactly, the ventilation system creates the noise and um, we conducted a noise analysis and we are in compliance with. Um, the state code at the, at the property line and um, nearby residences.
If Mr. Offeld, if I may just piggyback off your question. So to fully understand, Mrs. Vallor, I, I, I read um, the report that says you are in compliance to state requirements. But I believe we just said um, from property lines, um, just a practical matter. Would you, the batteries be able to hear this? Battery?
So at, from the um, nearest residence, the nearest residence is over four hundred feet from. The battery pack, so it would be relatively inaudible there, actually inaudible. Um, from the nearest property line, it's about a hundred and ten feet, so when it is on full blast at its highest. Could maybe hear a small humming, but hardly anything. Um, the, the noise calculation that I did. Um, would show its noise at its very maximum and it's not always at the maximum. But from the residences, you should not be able to hear it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I did wanna dig into this noise issue a little bit further, if that's okay. I don't wanna.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Monopolize the question time. Uh, but I'll go ahead. Um. So I, I did read that report, the um, noise assessment. And I just had some que- further questions about it. So the um. The, the Tesla Megapack generates seventy five decibels. At, at uh, thirty two feet. I couldn't find that in the, in the um, specification sheet. Can you point me to that or, or? It may be in a document you haven't. Provided to us, um.
It, yeah, honestly, it may have been in a different document, or we might have had to ask Tesla. Um, directly, but I can provide it to you after this meeting, if that's okay. I'm just not sure I'd be able to find it on the fly.
Yeah, I would just like to see what. You know, what conditions that, under what conditions that noise is generated.
Hmm.
The data sheet I have shows. Uh. Well, a bunch of other information, but not that particular fact.
Um. Understood, understood. Find it really quick.
Okay. Okay, otherwise I, I thought the, the inverse square analysis was. Good, I think that there is a property to the north, which may be a little bit closer, the residence to the north, I think is a little bit closer, but. There, my judgment was that there is sufficient, um, because it's down, because it's up slope. That noise is gonna be less of an issue, there's, there's a series of embankments between the battery system and the. Proposed battery system and that residence.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, so, just to be clear about this, so what you're saying, and, and this is, I, I asked Jamie this same question. But when this thing would be operating, when it would be generating noise? And he suggested that it would be just when it's charging or discharging, which would be during the daytime. Um, but are you saying that it could be? Making noise? You know, in, early in the morning or late at night or what have you?
Um, Jeff, do you wanna take that one?
So with respect to charging and discharging, that's correct, it would only be. During the daytime, at nighttime, you could have um, air conditioning loads through the HVAC system in very intense summer months. Um, but it's generally just air conditioning and cooling that needs to be done. And only when the temperatures are above ninety degrees um, Fahrenheit, um. And that, you know, and if you're talking about off hours at nighttime, that's relatively rare for uh, Amherst. Uh, anytime during the year, except maybe the most intense summer months during heat wave.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I believe I read somewhere um, in one of your documentation. That there would be some underground wiring done? Did I misread that? Um, I believe when you presented just now. I didn't hear anything about that, it was just added additional lines, um, overhead to connect them.
Yes, so the underground wiring is gonna go from. Um, the new hole, utility poles that we put in to the battery pad. So let me actually try to highlight this on here. Um. So we have some new poles. That I'm circling in blue. And then from this point, it's gonna go underground. Um, all the way to the battery pad to connect it. Like that blue line.
Is, is there a rationale for both the overhead and the underground?
Um, Ever Source typically prefers overhead when it comes to their um, poles, because all of the equipment is above ground. So once we hit um, the last required utility pole. Then we're able to go underground, cause there's no further equipment, it's just wiring that goes the rest of the way.
And to, to add a little clarity to that, Ever Source requires above ground for their work, and then we go underground as soon as we're able to with our work. So Ever Source owns those poles, Sam just identified. All above ground work is owned by Ever Source. The last pole is called the riser pole, that belongs to us, and that's where we take the, the line underground. Uh, and run it to the facility.
In, in the, in the application packet, there, there is also submission for what the battery packs would look like. Um. I, I imagine that is the battery pack that has been utilized.
Yes, the, the Tesla Megapack.
Okay.
Yes.
And. Um. I, I, I believe you said earlier. The batteries weren't built or. For prior, or is it about this particular time that the batteries were built? Are these batteries now built?
No, they're not built at all now, there, there never has been, there's no battery now either.
Okay, so, um, so these are not something that's just Tesla made and they're just sitting there, are they built specifically for? Um, this design for the solar farm? How does that work?
So there, the, the batteries are not on site yet. Um, we're in the process of ordering them.
Sam, I think the confusion is that when, when she said it's not built, she means that these batteries were never installed on the site it previously. Um, they will be installed, but yes, they are, they do come built by Tesla. You know, from their factory, they come built together, so. That's not, not really a concern, if that helps with clarity there.
Thank you for the clarification, but yes, we do understand that we did go to the site visit and there are no batteries there, so we do understand that um, the batteries aren't there. But the, the question was um, that the proposed batteries will not change.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Does anyone else from the board have any questions for the applicants? I don't see. Um. Any hands? So, um. Mrs. Vallone and your team, thank you for your presentation. Um. I, at this time, I will take comments from the public. Um. The. This is not an opportunity for the applicants to answer public comments, it's just um, hear from the public as to. Any feedback as to this proposed project, after the public has finished speaking, if anyone is going to speak. Then there would be opportunities um, for you to speak after the fact. So, any member of the public who wishes to comment on this application may do so by raising their hand, um, if they are. On the video Zoom, if they are on the audio Zoom only, I believe it is star nine. Please be mindful that you are allowed and allotted three minutes for public comments. And that comment should be specifically geared towards the application in front of us tonight. Miss Williams, do we have anyone? For public comment?
No, no hands have been raised.
I say we. I say we give it a, um, a few seconds or so, just to see.
No public comment for the attendees.
If there is no public comment, um, then at this time, I would entertain a motion to move the public meeting while keeping the public hearing open so that we can discuss the conditions and the findings that we have to make. Before we do so, I, I, I believe the, we were notified that the town staff has until August eleventh to weigh in with their comments. So for full disclosure for, um, the petitioner, we are going to allow them that allotted time for any comments. So we would not render a decision here tonight. Okay, so is there such a motion to, um, move to public meeting while keeping the public hearing open?
So moved.
Motion has been moved, these are second. The motion has been moved and second. Just to remind the petitioner that, um, this is an opportunity for us to discuss, not for you to add any, um, further information. If we do need information, we can ask those questions.
Thank you.
So I, I have no reservations or objections to this. It has been, um, heard twice, um, over the number of years, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty. Every documentation suggests that it is in compliance with, um, our bylaws. It has been approved twice. The battery from the site visit that we, we had, um, Jamie was very detailed, very informative. That was very helpful to see where things are, where things are going to go. I do not believe that there is any disruption to any off or abutters. And the fact that none of them are here to voice any such, um, opposition also gives some credibility to that. My position would be that the fact that it has been approved, um, twice, nothing primarily is really changing. It has gone through the appropriate process. I'm inclined to support this with the conditions that are proposed. And I will have other members of the board chime in. Mrs. Slobodar?
I, I support what the chair just said, everything. This seems like a straightforward relocation without any greater intrusion than what was already proposed. I'd like to raise one question with the chair. I don't know if you're planning to read all of the conditions now. But if we have to wait until August eleventh for the Town Conservation Commission and Town Staff, will we have to go through all of the conditions again at that time when we make the final vote, since we can't vote on it now anyway? You and I, and I presume others may indicate support, but we're not voting tonight. Do we have to read all of the conditions at the time when we vote? In which case, if you were thinking of also going over them tonight, that may make two opportunities. And I don't know that we want to do that. So I'm just not sure what you're doing.
I would suggest we do not go through the findings tonight or the conditions in the event that there are inputs. I, I, I do not believe that there would be, but just so we don't do this twice, I would suggest that we wait until our next meeting when we're actually rendering our decision. Also, it may give us an opportunity to go back and review documentation. And someone may say, hey, here's a proposed condition that I think we should add.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Offeld?
I agree that, uh, this is, uh, already been approved and this is more or less the same, um, concept that's being proposed as, as the original battery location. With the one change that it's closer to residences, and that's why I just want to be, be really sure that there's no, uh, noise nuisance introduced here. Uh, so I, I look forward to getting some further information as, uh, Ms. Valone suggested she would get to us about the, uh, noise generated and any clarification on the, when it generates that noise would be useful. With that clarification, I'm, I'm inclined to support this and as I read the conditions, the staff review of the conditions, I would concur with all of the, with, with the exception of the noise issue, uh, everything else. I mean, we may say something different about noise, but anyway, the, the rest of the conditions were, uh, I, I thought were handled appropriately in the staff review.
Thank you, Mr. Offeld. Mr. White?
I would just repeat or echo whatever one else has said on this. Yeah, I'm inclined to support it, but obviously we need to wait and see what the final recommendations are from staff.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Meadows, any input?
Nothing different than what everybody else has already said.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So with that, I, I would entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain of August fourteenth. And I should have checked to make sure that all our members are available on August fourteenth. So I, I think, um, I suppose we, we're doing this, um. So is our current panel, I, I saw Mr. Offeld and Mr. White confirmed August fourteenth is fine for both of them, Mr. Meadows, Mrs. Slobodar?
I'm, I'm fine on the fourteenth.
Yes, I am good on the fourteenth.
So we have our panel for August fourteen. Thank you all. So if I may, entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain of August fourteenth for a final, conditions review as well as findings and vote of approval. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and second. Um, the chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mrs. Slobodar?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Offeld? I, I believe Mr. Offeld is an aye. So, um, ZBA petition FY twenty twenty-six dash zero one, LSC Fornax LLC, Pulpit Hill, has been continued to August fourteenth at six PM for review of conditions as well as findings and a final vote for that special permit. Thank you to the applicants and we will see you on August fourteenth.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item tonight are any matters not before the ZBA today for general public comment. Ms. Williams, do we even have anyone here?
We have three people in the attendees, um, as members of the public, but no one, um, has raised their hand to speak.
Okay. And if there are no public comments, then we will look at our upcoming calendar and see if we do have any petitions on the horizon.
Sure, one moment. Okay, hopefully everyone can see our schedule. Um, so we just continued LSC Fornax to the fourteenth and so far, that is the only application that we have for that evening. And we don't have much else for the upcoming meetings. We're waiting on people to sort of get their ducks in a row. So, you know, um, hopefully they will and I will update you accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So on that very lovely, happy note at six forty PM on this wonderful Thursday afternoon, I would entertain a motion to, um, adjourn this meeting until August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have such a motion?
So moved. So moved.
The motion has been, has been moved and second, the motion is not debatable and just requires a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mrs. Slobodar?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Offeld? Thank you all for being here and thank you again for this very wonderful short meeting. We are a jerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.